Yeah.
My Lord, ground three is that the learned judge erred in finding section duty, section 20 duty arose immediately upon the claim representing himself as homeless to Runnymede. And I identify this as being the core of the appeal. And I'd like now to look at some of the documents relating to that in the supplementary bundle. We have at supplementary bundle 77, just for your note, I don't want you taking there at the moment, the form filled in by B C with Runnymede. You have at 83, the referral form is sent over from Runnymede to Surrey. And you have at 84, the request for support form.
Which of those do you want us to look at?
84. And at 85, you see the household details being completed. And at 86, what are the child and family's needs? And it says, mum asked B C to leave about three weeks ago. Since then, he's been living with his friend Kay and his mum. He stays there overnight, goes home to shower and get clothes from his mum's. Kay's mum has now said she doesn't want him to stay any longer and is unable to stay tonight. Kay and his family live in Chertsey. B C has been arguing for a while now regarding the drug issues. He's smoking weed and his mum is worried that the dealer will find out where they live. And more details about the drugs and threats. And that is what is sent over to Surrey from Runnymede. And then at 89, to complete correspondence between Surrey and Runnymede on the 20th of September.
Sorry, 89?
89, yes.
Yeah.
This is what comes back to Runnymede further to your referral. I am writing to inform you that B C is being referred to the targeted youth support team, who will offer him the support he needs at this time. Now, this is what the learned judge identified as triggering section 20 duty at this time. And the 20th of September date, your lordships will recall from when we were discussing the date of potential judicial review. Decision under challenge could well have been the date of the 20th of September, because that is the date where Runnymede are informed that Surrey do not propose to go into the section 20 route, but are going down the targeted youth support route. So let's have a look at how Surrey came to that decision and where else it is recorded. And we've already looked briefly at the previous history. And it is right as well that there was a referral made about other members of the family in August 2019. And we see a referral on page 16 of the bundle.
Of this bundle, we're in the same bundle, are we?
The supplementary bundle, yes.
16.
At the top of that page, you see a little bit more about the incidences in B C's case that we've already looked at briefly. And early help have been involved since July 2017.
What's the date of this? 28th? It says at the date at the bottom.
You've got the date in the middle of calls made today, 28th of August 2019.
Sorry, there's a note at the bottom of the entry, there's a name and a date. Thank you, sorry. And it's your instructions, is it, that these redactions are all related to siblings?
Yes.
And was B C the eldest child?
I think I'm right in saying he was the middle child.
Okay, only because?
He was the youngest.
Right, okay.
So where it refers to the eldest, that's?
That's him.
Oh, he's the eldest?
Yes, he is. Of the ones that are living in the caravan, he has sisters that weren't living at the family home at the time. So in this referral, he's the eldest within that context.
Well, not, no, that doesn't follow, does it? I'm just looking at the first sentence, because that goes back to 2003.
My understanding, he has older sisters.
Right.
And then those older sisters, no longer at the relevant time, live in, live in the caravan. So you're quite right, my lord. In the reference to 2003, that wouldn't have been him.
That wouldn't have been him, yeah, no, I get it. Yeah, okay, thank you very much, yeah. Yeah.
In fact, if you go back to 13, you see the trigger to this was a 17-year-old, who we know that was B C, he was 17 at this time, sleeping in the same caravan as his family. With all this stuff, including his clothes being in a van next to the caravan. So having to live out of the van. And then phone call made to his mother, who was adamant that the concerns raised were malicious. So that's part of the background. But then we get the referral from Runnymede. And it is right to say that Surrey didn't spring immediately into action. But on the 18th of September, you see on page 26, contact is made with B C. I doubt you remember me, but we met two years ago. Could you call me or text when I can call you about your living arrangements? Thanks Vanessa Social Work.
Sorry, where are you, 26, where are you reading?
Down at the bottom. Contact dated 26th of September. The response above that, it goes in reverse chronological order. Hi Vanessa, it's B C, I don't have credit, so I'm using my friend's phone.
Yeah.
Above that, another telephone call, but no response. And above that, a telephone call, Spelford Housing Options, who confirms that B C has not been back since she made the referral, which he was aware of. They cannot do anything for him until he's 18 years old. Obviously, we've looked at the homelessness provisions. A 17-year-old can make a homeless application. And so there is an error of law in Spelford or Runnymede's decision there. And above that, we get to the 20th of September. So we need to look elsewhere for what's happened in the meantime.
But this is evidence of the decision, isn't it?
That is the decision, yes.
It's the decision.
But what we need to go?
That is the, sorry, just trying to clear up behind the lady. There's the first entry, the full entry on page 26. Management oversight contact decision, that is the decision, is it?
Yes. But to see how we get there, another inquiries to make before then, we need then to go to 34, please. Because we're on the 18th of September at the bottom of that page. And we've already looked at this entry with its reference to him being relying on his grandparents' caravan. I asked if he's still staying with Kay, he said he is. He told me he did not contact the social but went to housing on Friday. And my submission arising out of that is that intent, that shows an intent to get housing rather than to get social care, because that's who he's gone to. And his intentions for ongoing.
Friday would be the 13th, would have been the 13th, would it? Previous Friday.
It would have been, yes. On the previous page, page 33, the date of this is on the bottom of 32. It's again the 18th of September. And it is the social worker speaking to B C's mother. He remembered me from two years ago. I asked what has happened and she said he's being a complete klatch. Moved out because he couldn't get his own way and moved in with his sister, who also smokes weed and started using it. And then moved in with her in March, April. And then she moved and asked him to go with her, but he said it would have been too far from his friends. And then B C moved back home. So this was a little bit of a history we've got in March stroke April. B C moving in with his older sister and then moving back to the parental home. Mrs Robinson said she told him, we must get a job and said we can't fund him. Over the summer, she said, she was not working, so they only had father's wages coming in. Because he moved out, mother said she'd moved the girls into separate rooms. But when he came back, he got a job. On the third morning, he wouldn't get up. And he smashed things up and went to punch me. So his father told him to move out. Robinson said he stayed with a friend that night and came home the following day. So we have clearly got a picture of a bad relationship between B C and the parents, trying to impose rules of appropriate living and B C not putting up with that. But he keeps coming back to the parental home. And the underlying picture is of return to the parental home. Mother said father's parents had a caravan they no longer need and have offered it to them. She said she told B C they would put it next to their caravan and told him that he needed to get a job. But they would expect him to pay half the rent, i.e. £40, as a way of encouraging him to be more independent. And again, appropriate boundary setting by a parent in my submission. And for that, he'd get his food and his washing done, which is not a bad bargain. The next day, when he got up, he asked for money. She refused to pay for his drugs, so she started taking him to the shops to buy things for him. And the next day, he came home showered and changed, but he was still not getting a job. She said, she asked Brandon, do your mates treat their parents like this? And he said, I think you get off lightly. And in the middle of the next page, the other page, mother confirmed that B C has not been told he has nowhere to live. She said he's chosen not to be told because he doesn't want to follow the rules. She says he has not been told he's been excluded. So she is making it clear to the social workers when they make their inquiries that B C is not being excluded from the parental home. And that is a very key point in my submission. I asked mother, she knows where Brandon is now. She said she believes he's staying with his friend Kay. I said that according to the referral received from housing, Kay's mother said he can no longer stay with her. Mother said, I think that's the story. She thinks he and his friends are not as comfortable hanging around at the park now. The weather is changing, it could be somewhere they can drink and take drugs. Few other comments along similar lines. And so at the top of 32, upon review of the contact and inquiries undertaken since the receipt of the contact, I'm in agreement with the social worker's analysis and recommendation of Brandon to be referred to targeted youth support. And B C is not homeless as originally thought. But there is clearly a poor relationship between him and his mum. He is currently not in education, employment or training and using drugs. B C has agreed for a referral to targeted youth support. Focus of the work would be relationship reparations, supporting him back into education and supporting him with reducing his cannabis misuse. B's mother is also in agreement with the referral to TYS. And we also see that bit reflected in the analysis on page 34. He came to the attention of children's services after presenting at housing claiming to be homeless. Having spoken with his mother, this is not the case.
Sorry, where are you, I've lost you.
Sorry, I'm 34, in the middle of the page where it says analysis.
Yeah, we looked at that bit, yeah. Yeah. In between the two whole punches.
She would like him to start taking some responsibility. B C said his parents have said they will do this since December last year and to date it's not happened. He has, however, spent the odd night in the family trailer, albeit his room was given to him.
Yeah, we've looked at that passage this morning.
So that's the analysis that's supported in the decision on the entry on page 32. And then it's passed on to Runnymede council in response to the referral that they have made. So that is the decision in my submission that any judicial review should have tackled. And is a decision which in my submission was one that was wholly open to the local authority to reach.
Targeted youth support is what precisely? Is that, what category of support does that come on? Is it early help?
Yes, yes.
Do we find anything about it in the papers to show that that's what it means?
Perhaps the best place to go is to Miss Andrews' witness statement. Here we go, page 177 in supplementary bundle. So paragraph 18 tells you what TYS B C was receiving specifically assessed for him. And then 19 tells you a little bit more about what TYS means generally speaking.
Sorry, 177, did you say?
Yes. The red numbers.
Yeah.
And before lunch, when I was taking you to the guidance, I lost the reference that I wanted to make in relation to that. And at page 662 in the bundle of authorities, which is in the guidance, chapter three, paragraph 3.2 says, where there's no immediate threat of homelessness, intervention may be more appropriately led by early help services. So early help services are designed to do what is set out in chapter two.
Sorry, what paragraph was that on page 62?
3.2.
3.2. Got it, thank you.
And what we're trying to do is to support families to stay together as chapter two of the guidance exorts local authorities to do. And there's a cross-reference within this to the Working Together guidance. There's lots of guidance on this. Work to prevent minor issues becoming major issues. Early help is the kind of stitch in time that saves nine later on. And so we're targeting problems, for example, drug-taking can be, you start off with cannabis, it can be the gateway to stronger drugs and that can lead to crime. So if you tackle the cannabis use, you prevent somebody getting into crime.
What document were you referring us to, 3.2 of what?
The guidance on prevention of homelessness and provision of accommodation 16 and 17-year-old young people.
Page 662.
In the bundle of authorities.
Yeah.
So you say what Surrey County Court, the decision on the 20th of September 2019, you say was consistent with the policy, like of the guidance, it was all of a piece.
That's right. Helping him maintain his relationship or repair his relationship with his parents so that he could carry on living with them. And helping him avoid drug use and helping him get into education and training because he was wanting to do that.
So in this case, you say this case is, the facts of this case are pretty similar to those in TW?
I do.
Except in that case, the judge reached the alternative view, didn't he?
In TW, the facts were?
In the TW, the judge reached the view, except the local authority's submission, that's right. The judge accepted the local authority's case, didn't he?
Yes.
And the appeal failed. Appeal that the judge was wrong to say, to reach that decision, that failed.
What was said at paragraph 64.
Yeah.
Which is tab 29, it's page 635 of the bundle of authorities.
Yeah. You say that paragraph applies to you as well?
Yes, plainly open to the local authority. Following the guidance and in particular 3.2, to conclude that TW, B C, fell into the category of a young person needing early help. They had a range of needs and specific vulnerabilities, there was no imminent threat of homelessness. He needed support to reduce a chance of a problem getting worse. And that is what was decided in relation to B C by, sorry, by B C himself and by B C's mother. All of them were in concurrence with each other. That TYS, to help him with the problems that he was definitely evincing, would be the way forward without going to the full monty of section 20. When you take someone into section 20 accommodation with all that goes with that, it would have been a sledgehammer to crack a nut in this case.
Could you give me the page reference to TW? Because that's not a case that we've looked at. I think my lord, my lord is familiar with it.
Indeed.
Which was the paragraph?
The case starts at page 635.
Yeah.
And it's paragraph 64.
Oh, 64. Thank you very much.
And at paragraph 62, the facts are summarized. TYS had been excluded from his stepfather's home. Although he was not sleeping with friends in a car, a reference back to June 17, he was dividing his time between two properties occupied by family members and sleeping on a sofa in each property. Those circumstances might have led the local authority to conclude that he was a child in need. But after S M's careful analysis, the manager concluded that he was not a child in need. The reasons set out above, that conclusion was one that the manager was entitled to reach. It was not rational. And the due deference was given by the judges dealing with that case to the decision of the local authority, noting that to interfere with that decision requires a high hurdle to be overcome. At paragraph 59, the bar is set higher and the challenge does not clear it.
High hurdle, why? Because you're interfering with an evaluative judgment?
Yes.
So there's, it's not so much deference, is it? It's just that it's the role of the primary decision maker to evaluate. So you, unless there's an obvious error of law, you tend to believe it being.
And when the judge said that, the passage I quoted in 59, that itself was that the judge had referred to an earlier authority, wasn't he? Anyway.
I can't find it.
Okay, anyway, don't worry. Your point is that the bar is set higher in these cases on the rationality challenge.
So what happened in this case was that the local authority, as has been noted, did know about B C and his family in the background. And knew that they had been able to work with him and the family in the past. And although things weren't ideal, there was a relationship between him and his mother that lent to him going back to live with her regularly. He was also offered his own alternative accommodation, which at that time he raised no issues with it being dilapidated or anything like that. So the local authority spoke to B C, spoke to his mother and said, and at the end of that, decided that he wasn't actually homeless in the sense of requiring accommodation, I think it is right to say. And reached the conclusion on the 20th of September that that was where it should stop targeted youth support. Things, of course, did not stop there. Over the next month or so, there were other interactions between the local authority and B C.
Miss Rowland, I'm conscious of the time. You've got not much more than an hour.
I appreciate it.
So I'm not sure how helpful it is to trawl over the facts in quite so much detail.
Those are the key facts, but the next key date is the 16th of October, when B C was taken into hospital under section 136 of the Mental Health Act. He was severely intoxicated and had threatened suicide. He was assessed and released next day with no findings of any mental health problems. And the reason why this is relevant is that his targeted youth support worker, not social worker but youth support worker, was contacted when he was discharged. And she was able to return him to Kay's mother's residence. And it was this that the judge relied upon when finding that from that point, this was accommodation arranged by Surrey.
This is a slightly different point, isn't it?
Yes.
This is not the in-need point. This is the whether or not they provided accommodation.
So I've already made my submissions in relation to Lord Justice Ward's checklist for why at this time Surrey were of the view that this was not a child in need, not someone in need of accommodation and not someone whose parents were prevented from finding, providing him with accommodation care.
So that's grounds three, four, five, seven and eight?
Yes. To put it in a few bullet points, just being homeless is not the same as being in need of accommodation. C D F, homelessness is?
Hang on, if these are bullet points, we'll note them down. Just being homeless is not?
Being the same as requiring accommodation. Or just applying is homeless, I should say. Because Runnymede didn't even make any finding that he was homeless, they would have been entitled to make the same inquiries as to whether he was in fact excluded from the accommodation. And we know that although he said he was, he in fact wasn't.
I mean, that's quite an important change, the way you put it. Being homeless, to say that being homeless is not the same as requiring accommodation doesn't sound logical. Your point is asserting he was homeless did not mean automatically he was requiring accommodation.
Yes. I think there's two sub-points to it. One is the fact that he'd applied as homeless to Runnymede did not of itself mean he was a child in need, which is really what the judge just said. But also, as we've seen from D F, there were two different statutory tests, two different statutory regimes and two different... Because you can be homeless whilst having accommodation. D F was technically homeless because she didn't have the right to remain in that accommodation past her 18th birthday.
Okay.
But she wasn't requiring accommodation.
What, sorry, that was one bullet point, what's your, I didn't mean to, sort of flow bullets.
The learned judge's finding that section 20 duty rose as soon as Surrey were put on notice from Runnymede precludes the local authority from making any inquiries. They have to take him into care whether or not he's telling the truth about his circumstances. Couldn't ask the claimant for his views or for his consent to being accommodated under section 20. He's 17, nearly 18. He needs to be able to say, yes or no, I don't want to be a child in care or not. The local authority is entitled to make their inquiries. And if it's so momentary, the decision, you're told he needs accommodation, therefore the section 20 duty arises there and then. That precludes not only inquiries, but it also puts the duty on Surrey to actually make inquiries day after day after day on a day-by-day basis. Surrey are entitled to look at it on a more longitudinal basis and see whether he has accommodation or whether he requires accommodation. Third point is that he said, and you see this at SB 30, he was happy staying at Kay's place, he felt comfortable there. The judge gave no weight to that at all. Fourth bullet point, at paragraph 76 of his judgment, the learned judge said that applying for housing assistance was an indication of a clear wish to be accommodated by Surrey. If he had wanted to be accommodated by Surrey, he should have come to Surrey rather than Runnymede. So that is a step too far by the learned judge on the basis of the fact. So that is a step too far by the learned judge on the basis of the facts before him. Wanting to have your own tenancy, your own accommodation isn't very far from wanting to be taken into care. And we've looked at all the things about an emerging adult who might be someone in need, but might also be able to live independently. And it was perfectly open to Surrey to find that B C was someone who was standing on his own two feet, wanting his own accommodation, needing help with getting accommodation, hence the application for housing assistance, but not needing accommodation as flagged by Lady Hale in a Freudian. It is for the local authority to make their own assessment. And that is, in the, in the circumstances of this case, it was lawful for Surrey to find that the tick boxes in the checklist were not fulfilled.
Lawful and not irrational.
And not irrational. And at paragraph seventy three of his judgment, the learned judge found that B C's parents were prevented him, prevented from offering him accommodation. This is at page one hundred and forty nine of the bundle. The judge rightly noted that the widest possible scope must be given to this provision. It makes no difference whether the reason is one which the carer has brought about by her own act or one she's resisting. But the finding by Surrey was that she wasn't excluding him. She wasn't prevented from offering him accommodation because she was offering him accommodation, whether that be her own caravan, another caravan, or yeah, those two options. But she was not prevented from it, she was able to. It was just that B C was opting not to choose to be there. So being prevented by and at paragraph seventy seven, the judge says, nobody objected to the local authority's intervention. K's mother did not, nor did B C's parents, indeed B C's mother agreed to T Y S being provided by S C C. And there's a complete contradiction between saying she agreed to T Y S, which included repairing the family relationships, being provided by S C C and saying that she was prevented from finding accommodation for him. The whole idea of the T Y S would be to facilitate and to ensure that she was able to ensure that accommodation was available to B C, if that was the way they chose to go. So the judge impermissibly in my submission substituted his own findings there for that of the local authority. So in all the circumstances in my submission, the judge was wrong to find that section twenty duties arose by the eighteenth of September or the twentieth of September twenty nineteen. So we were entitled to conclude that B C was not a child in need and was not someone who was in need of accommodation because of any of the statutory criteria. If I succeed on this point, then we don't go on to the next issue, which is the October twenty nineteen issue.
Say that again, if I'm right.
If I'm right on the, this first cluster of grounds, the first issue, then the second part of it doesn't arise. Because whatever happened in seventeenth of October twenty nineteen, it is not happening against a background of section twenty duties having arisen, but Surrey ignoring them or failing to comply with them. But what the learned judge found was that in the circumstances of B C being discharged from hospital, having been given a lift back to his currently existing accommodation by his support worker, that meant that Surrey were then arranging the accommodation from that point on. A little bit more than just giving the lift, there had been a meeting arranged on the first of October at which B C's mother and K's mother were talking about finances between the two of them. So at S B seventy, we see the update of the family action plan there. And we see at seventy one, what are we worried about? Parents are struggling with B C's behaviours and wanting relationship between B and his parents to improve, support through mediation. B is currently staying at a friend's home, K's. If their relationship was to break down, he is at risk of homelessness. And below that, the other two issues, the, the drugs and the employment and education. So the plan to do the referral to catch twenty two in relation to drugs and to update his C V and looking to training options in relation to those. But you have at seventy one, K's mother has agreed B C can live at her home. So as far as that is concerned, at that date, that was the position.
Where's that?
So the third column is the sort of table in the middle of the page.
So.
I'm looking at.
So the woman. J D, initials J D. The woman identified in that column.
Yes.
Is K's mother.
That's right.
What is catch twenty two?
Catch twenty two is the drug support service.
I'm really, I can't see the bit about mother says he can live at home. I'm on page seventy one.
Under the heading action on page seventy one, how will we get there?
Yep.
Below that, it says work with parents and B C to look at suitable housing options.
Yeah.
Below that.
Got it, got it, got it, got it, sorry.
That is K's mother.
Looking and couldn't see.
Miss K, was it, did you tell us there was talk about financial support?
Yes. So a meeting was arranged between K's mother and B C's mother, at which they were going to talk about financial support. And I'm sorry, I'm just looking for the reference now. On page forty eight, you've got a reference to the age birth caravan that can be put on site for eighty pounds per week. Both parents agreed that they would subsidize this and would want him to pay forty pounds per week.
Four, four, what page?
Forty eight. There we go, fifty two, seventeenth of October twenty nineteen. Mother explained she'd heard from the hospital regarding B C being sectioned last night. Explained he had now been discharged and I had returned him to K's home where he's currently staying. She I explained K's mother is happy to accommodate B C, but was enquiring if Brandon's family could provide some financial support for him. And mother said she's struggling financially at present as father is unable to work due to a recent heart attack. She explained both her and father give Brandon mother money intermittently when he asks, but they cannot keep doing this.
So what is our references to financial support provided by his mother?
Yes.
To K's mother?
Yes.
Was there ever any discussion of financial support by the local authority? Did the local authority facilitate the discussions between the two mothers about financial support?
I think the highest it gets is what we see at fifty two. I asked if Michelle were able to give a call to mother, K's mother. So they were able to make some arrangements, so they were both on the same page as I felt B C was not being entirely honest with either of them. She was reluctant to call, but then we see at seventy.
Who's the, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, I've lost the plot a little bit. Who's Michelle?
Mother.
I thought she was called Jenny.
That's K's mother.
K's mother.
Oh, I'm so sorry, okay, got it.
Which does rather beg the question who Jane is.
Support worker. Jane Stubbs.
So we probably don't need to get, do we need to get through all these references? But your point is that the authority may have facilitated conversations, but did no more than that. Yep.
That's right. It was a pre-existing state of affairs. So he looked at it, saw that it was suitable in those circumstances, saw that as a result of it, he didn't require accommodation, but did nothing to set it up, nothing to maintain it, nothing to support it. What the judge says is Surrey didn't tell anybody that this was not a private arrangement.
Is the judgment related to this?
Paragraph eighty two on page one hundred and fifty three. At no stage did S C C make clear to K's mother that this was a purely private arrangement between her and B C's mother. That's using a language of case law relating to private fostering arrangements.
Excuse me, where are you reading from there? Eighty?
Eighty two.
Eighty two. Thank you.
Having cited Southaken D, in considering the local authority's duty under section twenty, we are prepared to accept that in some circumstances, a private fostering arrangement may become available in such a way as to permit a local authority to sidestep section twenty duty.
So the role, so again, I'm crossing the line. His, the judge talked about the central role, the major role the local authority played in arranging. And in doing so, he was drawing in the language of Lady Judge Smith in this, in the subject case. And your point is although they, they helped to facilitate, it wasn't a major or central role.
They were, I, I, I think facilitators even over legging the pudding.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Monitoring it or.
Had a hand in it.
Happy, happy with it, certainly.
Well, on the note that we showed us, they originally asked mother to ring K's mother. But mother said no, understandably, because she thought she might be judged. And so it came about that there was then the, the subsequent meeting that you've shown us.
Yes.
Discussion that you've shown us. But that initially, they, Surrey asked for the mother to ring K's mother.
Yes.
Had a hand in was what I suggested after, you didn't like facilitating, you thought I was over rigging the pudding. Having it had a hand in?
Had a hand in, sir.
Okay, but that's not sufficient, you say, on the authorities to justify what the judge found a paragraph eighty three, a major role.
Indeed. It was a pre-existing circumstance. It was something that B C had basically set up for himself. And it's not for Surrey in those circumstances to say, look, you do realise you're not getting paid for this, which is basically what the private fostering cases are about, where people think that the local authority are placing somebody with them on a fostering basis. And they've got a sort of a expectation that the local authority is going to fund that. That's the kind of language where you talk about Surrey making it clear that this is a purely private arrangement. So we were not thinking that they were organising accommodation for him because they didn't think he required accommodation because he already had it. And they were just taking him back to it on that particular one occasion. There is the reference in the medical documentation to him being discharged to Surrey, to the support worker, Miss Stubbs. But that's not Surrey's fault, that's not Surrey's records. They weren't accepting a discharge, they were just providing him support. So it was the same accommodation as it had been before, as it was again after this incident. But the judge wrongly in my submission thought that it had changed in nature and had become accommodation provided by Surrey in the exercise of section twenty, and that's how their duty arose. But there is a real problem between an earlier finding that B C was clearly a child in need because he had accommodation with K that was accommodation that simply wasn't suitable for him, which is what the judge found under the first aspect of this. And the later finding that this was accommodation that Sue Surrey could arrange as suitable accommodation for him under performance of the section twenty duty, couldn't really be both.
The conflict was, say that again, the precise inconsistency.
B C was a child in need.
Yeah.
And required accommodation. The judge looked at the accommodation that B C had with K and his mother and said this wasn't accommodation that counted, so he was a child in need of accommodation. And yet, when B C went back there after his episode of being sectioned, the judge found that this was suitable accommodation arranged by Surrey in performance of section twenty duty. There's an inherent contradiction in finding that the same accommodation is to be disregarded and yet is to be considered as performance as the same duty.
So, okay, it's a contradiction. So what do you get from that?
What I get from that is that this was not accommodation that was arranged by Surrey because it wasn't performing a duty, it was simply accommodation that B C had found for himself.
Well, that's, that's the primary point. And just on the contradiction point, what does that add?
It supports the finding, the, the submission that the learned judge heard in law and didn't understand the point about support requiring accommodation under the first cluster of grounds.
But we're only in this ground if you're wrong on those.
Yes.
Yes. I don't want to take up time, as well as, I'm not myself convinced that, although there is a bit of apparent inconsistency. I'm not convinced it's inconsistency when you drill down into it. There are two different situations we're looking at. But that, that leads me to the wider question. We're, we're only looking at ground nine, this question of provision of accommodation, leaving aside the, the whether or not there's a contradiction. This provision of accommodation or ranging of accommodation is only, only comes into play if you're wrong on grounds three, four, five, seven, eight. What, what then does it add if you are wrong on ground three, four, five, seven and eight? The contradiction. No, no, the, the whole of ground nine, what does ground nine add? Because, because I'm not, I'm sure it's my fault, but I'm not clear as to what it is that ground nine is adding if you're wrong on the section twenty point.
The question then becomes, did Surrey ever actually provide accommodation? In Emin, Haversmith and Fulham, the House of Lords told us that the defining question is whether the local authority has provided accommodation. And at paragraph twenty.
Even if you're wrong about, even if there was a section twenty duty.
If there was a section twenty duty and Surrey did nothing in performance of it, the question is not whether there should have been something done, whether there was something done in performance of it.
Okay, so you say that the respondent needs to win this second point too?
His second point or their alternative cross appeal.
Okay, but that's a separate thing, okay. So on the issue, the initial issue, shall we call them, you say they need to win this too. It's not only a question of the section twenty duty, which you say there wasn't, but even if there was, it still matters as to whether accommodation was actually provided?
Yes. Because Hammersmith and Fulham, which is at page one ninety-nine...
Sorry, I missed it, my lord was coughing and I missed the page number.
One nine nine, in the bundle of authorities. Paragraph forty-four. It is one thing to hold that the actions of a local children's services authority should be categorised according to what they should have done, rather than what they may have thought they were doing. It's another thing entirely to hold that the actions of a local housing authority should be categorised according to what the children's services authority should have done, had the case been drawn to their attention at the time.
And that was paragraph...
Forty-four on page two, one, three. In a nutshell, unless A, the duty arose, and B, Surrey performed it, you don't get into any of these categories that we looked at of relevant child, former relevant child, because he wasn't actually accommodated by Surrey at any point.
So to get into a category, and I haven't worked out which one it would be yet, you actually have to have accommodation, in other words, the need has to be met by accommodation. That brings you into the net, and then you have the consequential right to say, I should be able to have these things.
That's right.
And can I just make sure I'm in the right place? So if you are right on October twenty nineteen, and there was no, let's call it, provision of accommodation or assumption of responsibility or whatever it might have been, then B C's only prospect is to rely on the residual discretion. Is that right?
That is absolutely right.
Because there's no, he's not a qualifying child or a relevant child or formally relevant child or whatever it might be?
Spot on.
Okay.
So then my learned friend's cross appeal is that there was performance at an earlier stage, and I will respond to that when she has made that point. But it is key to the finding, not just that there have been a duty arose, but also that there is something that you can pin to as performance. Then we go on to the G E eritrea discretion, which makes it clear, I think, that what I've said there about the need for some performance is... So my submission is, on the twentieth of September, and at every stage thereafter, I think, until B C fell out of their purview at this point in time in October, it was always legitimate for Surrey to have found that this was not someone who required accommodation under section twenty. It would be unusual to accommodate somebody of seventeen and three-quarters as B C was at that time, because at that stage, an emerging adult is looking to find their own feet and to move out of accommodation into the real world. Seventeen-year-olds are rarely accommodated under section twenty. But in any event, in the circumstances of this case, this was a decision that was well open to Surrey in the performance of its evaluative judgement, and the judge was wrong in the way he dealt with it. He was also wrong for the reasons I've just briefly outlined, in relation to whether or not Surrey actually did anything to perform the duty. It is scratching around to find something in my submission and the judge heard in that matter. So having identified the twentieth of September as the date of the key decision, I would accept that there could also have been points later where Surrey could have reached another decision, and so the date for judicial review could have gone further on into October. But at any rate, the claim for judicial review should have been brought by the beginning of twenty twenty, at the very latest, if B C had genuinely been aggrieved by the decision. But it was a decision that he was, at that time, in accordance with, he was offered and accepted targeted youth support and did not at any time seek accommodation from Surrey. The delay is inexcusable and should have led to this claim being dismissed at the outset. So unless there's anything I can assist you with at this point, I will sit down and let my learned friend make her point.
Would you pander to me by just going back finally to the four categories?
Yes.
Okay, so this child was never an eligible child?
No.
Never a relevant child?
No.
Therefore, never a former relevant?
No.
And you say was not a qualifying child because she was neither a looked-after child nor accommodated, he was neither looked after nor accommodated?
Never accommodated by Surrey at all.
He was never a child in need, you say?
Yep.
Never looked after, never accommodated, and never, the duty to accommodate, never arose under section twenty, and he was not in fact ever accommodated under section twenty?
Correct.
Can I pick up one point that you made just now? If my lord... Is it a good moment?
Is what?
Finish on that point, because it's important, that point, is that okay?
I have finished it, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to go over, please, your statement a couple of minutes ago, that section twenty is rarely used for seventeen-year-olds, that was a submission that you made. And I just wanted to pick away at that, just to make sure I understand it. And I think the point you're making is that section twenty has a range of possible interventions. I think what I should have written down is section twenty is rarely used to accommodate seventeen-year-olds.
Yes.
But if you've got yourself through to seventeen and three-quarters without needing the state to accommodate, you can probably do the last quarter on your own as well. You might need a bit of assistance at that age, because it's a difficult age, and there may be many situations where some assistance, some help towards accommodation might be profit, but am I roughly on the right track?
You are, and of course, the local housing authority can provide assistance under the aegis of the Housing Act nineteen ninety-six. For example, one barrier to getting accommodation is always finding the deposit. So a local housing authority could put their hand in their pocket and help you out with a deposit or event guarantee or something along those lines, rather than you needing social services intervention. So help with accommodation can come from either source under either statutory regime of the Housing Act or the Children's Act.
Thank you very much, Australians. Yes, Miss Liu?
My lord, the plan for our side in terms of advocacy is I will be responding to the appellant's grounds and dealing with the cross appeal of ground one, and my learned friend, Mr Clark, is going to address the court on ground two of the cross appeal.
Thank you.
It might just be worth just picking up the issues that Mr Justice Calvert identified in the judgment, and that's judgment paragraph sixty-three at call one four six. So the first four questions relate to the substance of the question about section twenty and when or whether accommodation arose, and the fifth question is the question agreed by the parties in terms of how it's formulated for the court to consider. And the sole question left was, should permission to bring judicial review be refused by reason of delay in bringing the claim? So it's that question that Mr Justice Calvert focused on at paragraph ninety of the judgment onwards.
Yep.
So in that respect, could I just start with some principled points? My lord, Lord Justice Coulson highlighted the case of M D Afghanistan to us earlier this morning. That is a case that confirms, as we've set out in paragraph thirteen of our respondent's notice, that there is a general inherent jurisdiction, inherent power of the court to set aside an order. What we, our submission is, as we set out at paragraph fifteen, based on the review of the case law, is that it's about the how, whether to do it in a given case and how. And we say that on that basis, it is the submission, our submission, that the cases show that it's got to be a very plain case that is rare.
So the cases show?
That it's a very plain case, in a very plain case where there's an error of principle made by the judge in granting permission in the context of delay or any other context where the inherent jurisdiction arises, it's a very plain case. And we say that you can analyse Gerber or Gerber, whichever way you put it, at Lichfield and the case of Thornton Hall, or within that category. The base principle that it should be a very plain case is set out in the C P R White Book in relation to the rule fifty-four-one-three on permission not being set aside normally by the defendant, and the case...
Sorry, and perhaps it's my fault, I thought your submission was that this court didn't have the jurisdiction to deal with it.
So I went and checked this. Our submission is that paragraph fifteen of our skeleton argument...
Sorry, just... The counsel has no right to challenge the judge's decision.
This is not, well, the second sentence is relevant, this is not a rare or plain, very plain case where the court should exercise its inherent jurisdiction to set aside the judge's permission for it.
Well, I've lost the thought a little bit.
Sorry.
Why are we being asked to set aside permission? Aren't we just, isn't there just a substantive appeal about the delay point?
Well, the way that my learned friend had dealt with it in her skeleton argument is that it's an appeal against the grant of permission.
I had understood, and I might have misunderstood, but I thought after going over it this morning, the appeal was on the issue of delay, whether your client was out of time to issue, to bring proceedings or not, the substantive issue about whether, on an appeal, nobody's saying that the judge should or shouldn't have granted permission for it, but that there's now a substantive appeal against his conclusions.
Well, I'm happy to deal with it on that basis, but my learned friend, as I understood my learned friend's case, as she had always put it in writing, was that it was an appeal against the grant of permission, which is why the focus had been on the relationship between C P R fifty-four-five, which is the question about promptitude and three-month time limit, and the issue of fifty-four-three thirteen. And certainly, Lord Justice Lewison in granting permission highlighted and drew the party's attention to how all of that interacts with each other.
He was concerned that if it was right, that there was no jurisdiction, then Gerber was wrong because they were dealing with the very issue?
Yes, but our respectful submission is that Gerber wasn't wrong if you look at...
Well, before we get into the detail then, let's just clear away the undergrowth.
Sure.
This was a rolled-up hearing.
Yes.
So the order was made following a rolled-up hearing. So isn't it artificial to distinguish between permission on the one hand and the order for judicial review on the other?
Well, and that's how this court dealt with that in Thornton Hall on appeal on the question of delay.
Just let's forget, let's imagine a world where there's no authority.
Yes.
Okay? Except for section sixteen of the Senior Court Act. Start again. If we have an order following a rolled-up hearing in which the judge allowed a claim for judicial review, do you accept that it's open to the respondent, yes, to the respondent to the original claim, now the appellant, to challenge the judge's conclusions as a matter of principle on delay? That we have the jurisdiction to do that?
Well, we don't say that the court, I mean, we don't say that the court never has the jurisdiction to do that. Our focus is on whether and how that that jurisdiction should be exercised.
When you say how?
It's the factors that need to be...
Jurisdiction is black and white. Do we have the jurisdiction or not?
Yes.
Fine, thank you. So then...
The question then is about the court's approach to the exercise of that jurisdiction, which is really the central focus of the submissions.
Okay.
Are you still on the point about it needing to be a clear and rare case? Because I thought that went to the permission point, setting aside permission, which is a different strand of authority.
At the permission, yes, I mean, the pure setting aside of permission, the Chinoy, the Webb, you're quite right, my lady, that those cases weren't delay cases and therefore they were about other procedural irregularities, and so would not concern your ladyship and the court in relation to this. The two cases that are central to this are the cases of Gerber and also the case of Thornton Hall.
Okay, so would you like us to look at that?
Yes, that will be helpful, I'd ask you to pick up Gerber in the first instance, and that is in the authorities' bundle, volume one, at... That volume two, because I think you're, yeah, volume two, page three nine six, because I think your lord, Lord Justice Baker, said that...
There are no tabs for those of us working in...
Yes, there are no tabs.
As far as our charges...
I managed to work out that, where it starts, so I hope...
So three nine six?
Three nine six is Gerber.
Yep.
So this is a case that is concerning a judicial review to the grant of planning permission.
Yep.
And the facts are set out in paragraphs two and four, I don't need to trouble you too much on that, but there were four grounds where the claimant was granted permission, and you can see that at paragraph five and paragraph six sets out the grounds that were upheld by the judge on a substantive hearing. That's important because there were four grounds that were granted permission, and three of those grounds were not challenged by the respondent. And the focus is on the third ground, which is whether Mr Gerber had a legitimate expectation to be notified directly about the decision on planning, so that he could then have time start from there. So the legitimate expectation substantive ground and the argument on delay are inextricably linked in that case. So if one falls, the other falls, because he can only say that he hadn't delayed or the delay wasn't unreasonable if he had a legitimate expectation to be notified of the planning permission, which he didn't have that notification. And you can see that in the, paragraph thirty-nine is issues before the court, and paragraph forty to forty-four is how this court dealt with the legitimate expectation substantive ground. And you can see at paragraph forty and forty-four, the decision was that, well, there wasn't any legitimate expectation to be informed, even though he lived nearby, he should have just recognised that it was, there were plenty of ways in which notice was given to him, he ought to have just brought it. Then the court deals with the extension of time question at forty-five onwards, and the particular context of planning was noted, and you can see that at paragraph forty-six over the page, top of the page, let us be to see, because this is a planning context where there are balances of different kinds of competing interests. And then there are two ways in which Mr Gerber said he had the right to delay bringing the claim, and forty-eight is the point about the legitimate expectation. So once that falls, he's in an ordinary person's position and should have brought it earlier, and therefore there was no excuse for the delay between the grant and when his first period of delay. He had a second reason, that he relied on incompetent legal advice, and that's for He had a second reason that he relied on incompetent legal advice and that's fifty-two. And this court also said, well, no, that, that isn't actually, that's your problem. That isn't actually a basis for extending time.
Yeah.
And then the end of fifty-three, at the bottom of that page, four-one-one, letter H, in the context of planning judicial review, it's a very high bar to exercising the discretion that a court should have in relation to.
So, where are you reading from?
That's fifty-three, letter H, page four-one-one. Other than in exceptional circumstances where other factors are also in play. So, it's not impossible, but it's not, it's not.
To extend time by reference to legal advice?
Yes.
Yeah, understand that?
And then, so that's Gerber and Thornton Hall, this court.
But did Gerber hold on, paragraph fifty-one, isn't that, I mean, that's the sideline passage, I don't know who's sidelining it was, but isn't it the fact that the Court of Appeal in this case reviewed as a substantive appeal point whether Mr Justice Duff had been right or wrong to extend time? And however they got to that conclusion, they said that there was a flaw in his legal analysis and he shouldn't have extended time.
Yes, because, because there was an inextricable link between, he had to rely on him having a legitimate expectation to bank the reasons.
Yeah, that was, those are the facts of that case.
No, I agree.
What principle do you get from this?
Well, I was going to look at how Gerber was then applied by this court in Thornton Hall because then the court, this court in Thornton Hall then sets out a list of principles in terms of the approach that the court may take in a case considering that. And that judgment, my lords and ladies, is at tab twenty-two, page forty-four-four-nine. So, it's in the same bundle that you're in and it's tab twenty-two for my lady. That is a planning case as well and a planning case concerning some marquees that were subject to planning permission and a time limit. And there were various procedural irregularities in the way that the planning authority dealt with it so that the affected party, who was a competitor to the person with the planning permission, didn't find out about it until five years later. That is a claim that came as a rolled-up hearing and you can find that at page four-five-one, letter G. The consideration of time starts at four-five-eight. And the principles are set out at paragraph twenty-one and I could make my proposition so little one at paragraph twenty-one, page four-five-eight is the general principle of acting promptly, nothing controversial there. Paragraph two over the page is, when considering extensions of time, drawing on Gerber, it's a fair balance between those affected. And that, we say, could also equally apply in the present context. And then paragraph four, which is the bottom of four-five-nine, letter H, what is required to satisfy the requirement of promptness will vary from case to case and depend on all the relevant considerations. And a reference there. So, that's, the merits of the claim would always also play a role in that. Importantly, at paragraph six, at four-six-zero, this court said that once the extension of time has been decided and for the issuing of a claim is justified, the question can't be reopened when the claim is heard. Reference is made to section thirty-one.
But obviously, that's got nothing to do with an appeal.
No, but this is.
And that's the simple point.
Yes.
That's made in a number of cases, that if permission is granted and the judge in granting permission has allowed an extension or found that the claim was brought promptly, when the substantive hearing is heard, the respondent to the application can't open up the question of delay, it's already been decided.
They can't open up the question of delay for the purposes of permission.
They can for the purposes of relief.
So, there are two stages.
Yeah.
So, one is, should I be refusing permission? So, that's the structure of section thirty-one-six itself.
Yeah.
Should I be refusing permission? If I decide no, then that judge or another judge can say, well, am I going to exercise my discretion a different way on the basis of what I know by refusing relief even though I've granted permission?
Yeah.
There are two separate stages.
Yeah, but as far as we're concerned, we're not at, we are considering a judgment that has dealt with effectively both stages together.
That's true, although the two stages are argued separately as well.
But we will be dealing with this together. And so the question is, as my lady has put to you, our review of the delay and the extension of time, if that's what the judge did, we'll come to the detail, but that which the judge did.
Yes. That's fine, but can I, just before I leave this judgment, take you to paragraph eight?
Yes, I was about to say, do we have to go to it? If that sort of covers exactly what our parts are.
Yes, well, Lord Justice Baker, you've read my mind, I was going to take you to that paragraph in relation.
So, paragraph twenty-one-eight on four-sixty.
Yes.
We're the right, we're on the same page?
Yes, we are. So, this being a matter of discretion in terms of delay and consideration of promptitude and extension of time, the court will not, this court will not interfere with the first instance judge's decision unless it's flawed by misdirection in law or failure to have regard to relevant considerations taken into account, etc. You can read it for yourself, but that is the principle that we say.
Well, for my part, I can see some echoes or some points anticipating how we should approach this decision and what the court said in paragraph eight there.
Yes. Yes, well.
It's what Ms Rowland is saying, I think quite, I think she did pretty well. She said it was flawed by misdirection or rather a failure of regard to a relevant consideration.
And I, and you haven't been taken to parts of the judgment where we say that the matters that she identifies and your ladyship identified, to summarise, is prejudice, chaotic lifestyle, I think, are the two main ones. They were actually addressed by the judge in the judgment and I will take you to that part.
But going back to my lord's point, which does find an echo, I think, in this apparent subpar paragraph, maybe. This is tied in with the substantive issues, isn't it? The judge's opinion particularly is the question of what was the decision or the matter that was under review? Was it a continuing breach, as it appears to have been argued? Or was it a specific decision at a specific time?
And that's also something I am going to plan on addressing you once we leave this case because you're quite right, my lord, is that it's quite, it's quite important to identify the decisions. In the High Court, in the first instance, Ms Rowland didn't advance the case that the twentieth of September is the specific decision. That's why that isn't actually what is appearing, you would expect if that was the case for the Surrey County Council, that the judge would say, this is a judicial review of this decision on this date. It doesn't say that. It talked about the matters arising between a period of time. And so that also makes it relevant in terms of, well, what is that target that the judges identify? Second point, my lord, is in relation to the continuing breach, I will take you to where the judge deals with that issue. He approaches it in the same way that several other judges have approached the question of whether or not a breach of section twenty in denying that you're child in need and denying accommodation to you is an ongoing state of affairs. And so he wasn't going on a frolic of his own, but at paragraphs ninety-three to ninety-six of his judgment, he was addressing clearly in mind the cases that came before him.
Well, we'll come to all of that when we look at the judgment. My thought for diverting. At the moment, we're just looking at the principle.
Yes.
And, and the high watermark, as I understand it, of the principle is paragraph twenty-one-eight.
That's quite right.
Of Thornton Hall.
Yes, so your lordships and your ladyship have to have that in mind to say, unless there's an error of principle of the kind identified, the judge's discretion should not be disturbed. That's in any fact-finding type of case on appeal, that's a general principle, not just in the context of delay, but in the context of fact-finding generally.
But speaking for myself then, I don't understand paragraph fifteen of your skeleton argument. You put the word rare in inverted commas and you put the words very plain in inverted commas. I don't find those words in either of the cases you've taken us to.
I would accept that that was putting it too high and I do apologise to the court.
Editor, I'm making an observation.
And I'm making an editorial amendment to paragraph fifteen.
And is your editorial amendment to paragraph fifteen, you're talking there about the court exercising inherent jurisdiction to set aside the judge's permission grant. I think we've all agreed that's not what we're doing.
And that's why I'm moving on past that. I hope, once I've moved past that.
Can we, can we clearly, are you, do you accept that we must approach this question, we must approach this question by applying the principle in the first sentence of paragraph twenty-two, subpar paragraph eight?
Twenty-one paragraph.
Twenty-one point eight.
Yes.
Which in fact, as what their master lord says, was taken from what Lord Justice Duff said in Gerber.
That's quite right, and I would accept that. That is the approach that you have to take. You have to identify where the error was in the judge's exercise of the discretion before you can say, well, I might have done it differently, I might have taken a different view. But unless the judge erred, and that's that fine balance that this court has to strike.
Can I then just put down a marker perhaps for Ms Rowland's when she's on her feet again, just to ask Ms Rowland whether she agrees with that proposition of law? It's all on paragraph twenty-one, subpar paragraph eight of Thornton Hall. You could just have a look at that, please.
Could I, with that in mind, take your lordships and your ladyship to the judgment itself as the structure of the submission?
So, we're now moving on to?
From the cases to the judgment.
Yeah, to the cases, to the, yeah. Still on ground one, yeah.
Still on ground one, well, one and two.
One and two.
One and two.
Yeah.
I will do my best to identify the ground that I'm addressing and make my submissions accordingly.
I have already warned you that I like to have a heading.
Yes, no, I've taken.
Even though one heading is going to be three, four, five, seven, eight.
I've taken that head-on and taken that on board. So.
You have no idea, when you come back to your notebook a few days later, if you don't have headings, it's very different. The lord can read his writings, so even worse for you.
Well, I think you can see from our skeleton argument that I rather like headings as well.
So, we come, we're on the grounds one and two and we're coming to the judgment.
Yes, it's page one-five-five of the core bundle, paragraph ninety.
Yeah.
And our respectful submission is paragraph ninety, the judge firstly identifies the issues in play, which is, is it out of time? Is it manifestly without, outside the three-month period? And was it brought promptly? Or in any event, was it brought promptly? So, the suggestion that he didn't have the correct test in mind is not correct when you look at that.
Well, that's the test.
That's the test, because there's a submission.
So, where does he say when the claim accrued?
Well, I think what I would say in that respect, my lord, is that he decided that it was an ongoing breach that occurred, and he decided that it was an ongoing breach on the basis of the finding that he made earlier in the judgment because the structure of this judgment is such that this issue.
In fairness to the judge, the lord and I, I think, were quite critical of him for the way, why deal with this at the end, not at the beginning.
Right.
I suppose you could say that until he made his mind up about what the breach was, he couldn't decide when the time started. I don't have, I should say publicly, I don't have any difficulty with that. What I do still would like to know is an answer to my question.
Well.
Where does he say the claim accrued at such and such a date?
He doesn't say that expressly, but what he does make the finding of earlier in the judgment is when he thinks, when his view is that Surrey acted irrationally in not accepting that BC was a child in need requiring accommodation and the duty arose.
And that is.
At paragraph sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven.
And then you've got to go to seventy-two.
Hold on a minute, this matters, so can you go slowly of this?
So, sixty-seven is the first finding at page one-four-seven, under the heading of child in need. He makes the first finding there based on obviously a set of facts that he looked at at paragraph twenty onwards. So, he then makes his finding, this is a section-headed discussion, you can see at the top of the page.
And this is paragraph sixty-six, child in need by eighteenth September twenty-nine at latest. So, that's his pin in the chronology.
There. And then, my lady, you will then see at page seventy-two, sorry, page one-four-nine, paragraph seventy-two, this is under the next section of his heading, BC was without suitable accommodation. He then makes a second finding at seventy-two. And then finally, under the next heading prevented from, he makes the third finding at one-five-zero at the top of the page, seventy-eight.
Paragraph seventy-eight?
Yes. So, the three together is his components of the qualifying conditions under section twenty.
You've actually missed, or maybe I misheard it.
Seventy-two.
There's seventy-two, seventy-three. BC's mother was prevented.
Yes, so the finding of that is at seventy-five.
So, there are four points.
You're right.
There are four points.
I did miss that one. So, seventy-five is his finding of prevented.
Right.
And then seventy-six is his finding on wishes.
He was making these findings, was he? That's how he was approaching.
Well, he was making.
Local authorities.
No, my lord, you're quite right, but his finding is not a finding of fact. If you read seventy-five, for example, the second paragraph, second sentence, but on any view. So, that, and then the second half of that sentence is, in my judgment, no local authority could reasonably have concluded otherwise by the eighteenth of September. That's not the language.
Where were you reading from? No, you're right. Where were you reading from?
The second sentence of seventy-five.
On the, this is on.
On any view.
On any view.
On the mother.
And then if you read through that sentence, the second half of the sentence. In my judgment, the local authority could reasonably have concluded, etc. And he does the same structure in saying, on any view, at seventy-two, for example. Second sentence of seventy-two goes, on any view, his health development. This is a finding as to the irrationality in my respectful submission.
Okay. Will we find the same language in the other, the other three?
So, if you could find at sixty-seven, adapting the words of Lady Kell and Sutherland, it cannot seriously be suggested that a child excluded from home, etc.
Well, Ms Rowland says that sofa surfing is not sleeping on a sofa, but surfing from sofa to sofa.
Well, my lord, can I make the submissions that I would like to make on the substantive?
Forgive me.
On the substantive, I will address.
If we could just focus on the time points, it would be really helpful to me.
I was trying to.
I'm sorry for interrupting. So far, the date of the eighteenth of September twenty-nineteen seems to have emerged from a number of different paragraphs.
That is, and that is the, that is the structure, he then goes to paragraph ninety and he then says, okay, well, I have made the finding that on the eighteenth of September, a duty arose. And then he asks, what does that mean? So, we've looked at the very.
Ninety, he says, Ms Rowland observes that the events upon which BC realized took place in the period up to September twenty-nineteen.
Yes.
The claim should therefore have been brought, she submits, by the end of twenty-nineteen.
Yes. Yes, so he identifies that.
He identifies that that's her case.
That's her case.
Where does he deal with that?
Well, he deals with this firstly as an ongoing breach, so he considers.
Well, we'll come to ongoing breach. But is that the answer, that effectively he says the claim could have been brought at any time?
Well, I think by the very nature of the ongoing breach is that it didn't come to an end and so he dealt with it.
So, it's never come to an end?
Well, that's how I understood my, the first instance judge's analysis of ongoing breach because that is also consistent with how the cases that he cites at paragraph.
Okay, well, we'll come to those, but this is important. Okay, well, we'll come to those, but this is important, um, um, because, um, on that basis, it isn't a matter of discretion. Um, he's not extending time, he's finding that there's an ongoing breach.
What, my lord?
So if he's wrong about that, that's it.
No, my lord, um, um, because he then goes on, and I think my lady, um, Lady Justice's report identified that he goes on to deal with in any event at paragraph ninety-nine.
In in any event, what?
In any event, if contrary to the case, there was delay on the part of B C, there is a good reason to grant him an extension of time.
How could you say that if you haven't identified the delay?
Well, he.
You you, in these cases, I completely understand the ongoing breach and and you'll make your submissions on those cases in in a moment. And that could be key, but if it's not an ongoing breach, then on the face of the judgment, it looks as if the claim would have accrued in September twenty nineteen. One well understands that in these cases, th- there are applications for an extension of time very often, because the applicant says, I didn't know that that was the decision that had been taken. But it's usual to have a a a, uh, an exposition of what the, what the extension of time would have to be and how and why it's justified.
Well.
And we don't get that.
Well, my my respectful submission is that he deals with that, not at paragraph ninety-nine, but in the following paragraphs thereafter. Because you can see also, for example, a paragraph one oh four of that judgment. He does address head-on, um, the prejudice point, um, which, um, was was argued in front of him. Um, he addresses each of these, I I take a Lord, Lord Justice Colson's point in relation to the unredacted disclosure. Um, but at one oh two, um, he says, I accept it was only in February twenty twenty-two that sufficient disclosure was obtained to make a request to recognise and comply with this uh children act duties. And the refusal dated twelfth of May twenty twenty-two was challenged in time. So that's one aspect of his findings that he's made in the, in this, and in the context, my lord, of what he says at paragraph ninety-eight, that very often in these cases, the child who is affected does not actually know what decisions have been made.
Yeah, well, that I understand that, that was the point that I made.
Yes.
But but i- if we have to consider questions of an extension of time, then wh- wh- what one is considering in this case is an extension of time from the end of twenty nineteen to August twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
And and, um, wh- what I think we'll need to know is whether, uh, appreciated for your purposes, it's a fallback position. But i- i- if as a fallback position, that's an exercise you'd like us to do. Because it seems to me that, save for the ongoing breach point, it's it's important.
Oh, it is important, and he, my respectful submission is he does look very much closely at what happened between twenty twenty, the end of tw- two thousand nineteen, early twenty twenty, and, um, when the claim was issued, and he does that at paragraphs one hundred to one oh two. I appreciate that he ultimately concludes that it wasn't out of time, um, and was in time for a particular decision that's been made. I appreciate that that is how one naturally reads it, um, but he does address uh the matters that a court would have to address, which is, why didn't you bring it? What was happening? Is that a good reason? Is there prejudice to others, um, you know, and and what other issues arise that are relevant to that consideration? And my respectful submission is that in paragraphs one hundred and one oh two, he does, and one oh four, he does address that. It may not seem appropr- uh, uh, perfect, and it may be imperfect the way he deals with it. Um, but he also refers to the witness statements that were before the court, explaining the delay. And you see a reference to that, my lord, at paragraph one oh one, at the the s- last sentence of paragraph one oh one, addresses, um, a variety of, um, issues relating to not actually being able to figure out what decision was actually made. And and whilst your lordship and your ladyship have been told today by, um, Surrey County Council that a dis- an express decision has been made, and you've been taken to various records of it. Um, none of those records are records that, um, were provided to B C. There's no, unlike a case like in T W, which my lord, Lord Justice Baker had heard recently, there is no needs assessment in this case. That's one of the features of this case is that there are no reasoned decisions, no needs assessment, no document saying to B C directly addressed in any of the records, hi, um, this is Surrey County Council, we have interviewed you on this day and this day. These are the domains and needs that we've identified, this is what we've said, this is what we've decided. You will not find a document to that effect in any of the documents that i- is in front of you today or indeed, um, before the judge in the first.
Well, we were taken to one document which was said to show the decision, weren't we?
Yes, you were, um, but can I take you to what, um, how communications were with B C himself? Because on the twentieth of September, you've seen the management oversight decision. Um, or or what they call the decision, um, but the communication with B C, um, you can find at, um.
Hang on a minute, this is.
Yes.
This would be your alternative case.
Yes, well.
Construing out of a judgment that doesn't expressly deal with it, the question of an extension of time. But you say there's enough in there for us to be able to.
That that's my submission.
I understand that, I understand that. So shall we deal with your primary submission first? I'm, I know my lord's anxious to get into the details, but I would be keen to see that the, how this, this, um, uh, primary case and the the judge's primary finding actually works, this continuing duty point.
Of course.
Um, because, um, um, I mean, one is familiar with a, uh, a continuing duty in, let's say, uh, uh, in a nuisance case, where the defendant might take a limitation point, and you say as the claimant, well, don't be silly, your tree roots are still damaging my foundations today, so I could start this case tomorrow and and would be in time. So one understands that, um, but here, although you're quite right, the judge refers to a number of authorities, and I'm sure it's my fault, I hadn't, I didn't find the answer easy from from a quick skimp at the authorities. So i- if you want to make your submissions and show us those cases, I for one would be very assisted.
That's one of, that was my plan to deal i- in dealing with the ongoing breach. Um, if I can start therefore firstly at the reference my, um, the the judge below referred to in ninety-eight, which is the the sort of context in which she was looking at this. The case of Em and Hammersmith in Fulham, which your lordships and your ladyship had been briefly, well, I'm not sure you've been taken to, but you've been referred to that case, and it's Authorities' Bundle, Volume One, um, tab eleven for the electronic bundle, and it's page, it starts in page one one nine nine.
So if I'm writing a note to myself about the judge's route to his conclusion that there's an ongoing breach, you'd say we start at paragraph ninety-eight in reference to Em and Hammersmith, do you?
Um, I say you start with, because all of the other cases lead to the same point, which is that that the premise is the child very rarely understands what the rights that they have are, what services are actually available to them. And that is the context and premise from which, um, all these cases looked at the question of ongoing breach.
Okay.
So one nine nine, yeah.
Yeah, one nine nine. So, um, this is very briefly, this is a case where the child had presented as homeless to the housing authority. And the housing authority had thought that it was their job to deal with it and didn't refer her to social services. Um, she then, um, got legal advice and found out that actually she might have a section twenty obligation owed to her. Um, but because she never came to the attention of the children's services, um, the this, that, that's the context of the case. Um, it starts at paragraph twenty-five at page two oh seven, so.
I'm just looking at the.
Of course.
So the claim was dismissed?
Yes.
All right, okay, so paragraph twenty, did you say?
No, twenty-five.
Twenty-five, thank you.
And whilst we're just on this, it, what's important about this case is that it's a case where housing never referred him.
Same authority, within the same authority.
Within the same authority.
Unlike the current case.
Yes, so, um, housing never alerted social services to to her presence. Um, that's different to, factually to this case where housing positively alerted her, um, alerted, um, Surrey. So it is a case about what ought to have happened, um, and at paragraph twenty-nine, page two oh eight, you will see, um, the House of Lords saying, well, the housing department should have made a referral at the very latest, etc. Um, and then, um, it goes on to discuss the importance of, and what was going to be lost out because of individual couldn't get, um, into c- consideration for children at duties. Um, and at thirty-two, um, it talks about, um, the unfortunate, um, mistake that was made of never bringing her to the attention of social services. It is against this backdrop that, um, Lady Hale then goes on at paragraph thirty-three to identify, um, that, you know, this is a very unfortunate situation where, well, the child is not one to know exactly which authority to knock on the door of. Um, and that is something oftentimes that is not uncommon with troubled sixteen, seventeen year olds. That's all I, I wanted to give you, that context, um, because that is important context for all of the cases that were cited at paragraphs ninety-three to ninety-six. Um, two cases that are in the bundle, um, is.
So, sorry, the judge?
Yes.
At paragraph ninety-two, the judge effectively accepts your submission as to what the case shows.
Well, what all of the cases at ninety-three to ninety-six show.
Well, no, I mean, he 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 says, Miss Lu submits that the effect of the decisions in Hammersmith and Southwark.
Yes.
Is that blah and blah.
Yes.
You haven't shown us anything that, from Hammersmith that shows that.
Well, um, at thirty-three, um, Lady Hale cites from Lord Justice Wall's, um, judgment in the Court of Appeal that is ev- self-evident that most troubled sixteen, seventeen year olds will be unaware of the services available to assist them. And equally self-evident that the onus is not on the cha- children in need to identify and request the specific services that they require.
Mm-hmm, so the the dis- consequence was, what was the decision then?
So in that case, the decision was, well, they couldn't do anything in that case because he, she never came to the attention of the local authority children's services. And indeed, this is one of the cases that prompted that joint guidance that you were taken to by my learned friend earlier today um, on preventing homelessness to sixteen, seventeen year olds.
So I'm looking at the headnote.
Of course.
And it wasn't the case that the social services department was imputing with the knowledge that the housing department had. The decision was that because she had not been drawn to the tension of, the claim did not draw to the tension of the hap- of the social services, she had not been looked after, had not therefore been eligible child, therefore not a relevant child, therefore not a foreable child.
No, I, and I don't suggest otherwise, um, all I am taking you to for this purpose is that the House of Lords did consider at paragraphs twenty-five onward, that this is a case where, had the things been done correctly, um, what else should have happened? And in that context, um, they expressed regret that this didn't happen, um, acknowledged and observed that, um, most sixteen and seventeen year olds will not know which door to knock on correctly. And it is for the local authority, housing authority, children's services to act accordingly.
So it's really those, the dictor of, of Lord Justice Wall approved by Lady Hale that you're relying on, that citation?
That that is, yes.
Thank you. There's nothing there about an ongoing duty?
No.
No, uh, and and I promise I will take you to, so, because that is a case that that issue didn't arise because chil- the children's services didn't assume a duty, so it's not surprising, um, in answer to my lord, Lord Justice Colson's question, that in the Em and Hammersmith case, there wasn't a discussion about ongoing duty. In the G case, for example, um, the co- court did find that when he was put in a travel lodge and then later on moved on to housing.
Right, well, that's the next one, isn't it, Southwark, so what page is that?
Southwark is at pa- um, tab seventeen, which I think is in your volume two at the beginning.
Yeah.
Um, and and if you just look at the headnote, you will see the facts and circumstances of it.
No, sorry. It's the last one we're going on.
Ah, I may apologize.
That's right, yeah.
Um, I wasn't really told when, where the hard copy stopped and which done.
So, um.
So it should be the last one then, it's page three three three. Perhaps the easiest is if you go to paragraph, um, twelve to fourteen, you can see exactly the chronology of events that happened in the G case. So he, um, wasn't offered accommodation on the third, uh, at paragraph thirteen. He then was put in a bed and breakfast, but he was put in the breakfast, bed and breakfast that night. And then an initial assessment commenced, which obviously is different to this case because you don't have an initial ass- assessment. And the conclusion of that initial assessment is that there wasn't a duty to accommodate him. And then judicial review proceedings were, because they called it a housing duty. Um, and so, um, judicial review proceedings were ended, uh, commenced. So that that's a case where, um, even though, well, I suppose that's not a very good example of a continuing breach, but that is a case where, um, once a duty arose and accommodation was provided, that duty continued. And so anything that they didn't do subsequently, um, was in breach of the section twenty duty.
I haven't got that, you're good, if that's the point you're trying to get out of this case, I'm, I'm afraid I just haven't got there. So paragraph thirteen, in fact, he was put in a bed and breakfast accommodation. In order that he could be assessed, that's not an assumption of a section twenty duty, that's, that's just a pragmatic step uh, as you head into an assessment period.
Well.
What did the assessment say?
The assessment said that he wasn't in need of accommodation, that he just needed help with accommodation and education, you can see that at paragraph fifteen.
Yeah.
Unwords. So this is the factual basis of the challenge.
That was upheld at first instance, I think, and then the the Supreme Court overturned that, didn't they?
Yes.
He was, he was on the substantive question about whether section twenty points denied. It it did.
Yes.
Help me, I fail to see anything here about continuing breaches.
Um, can I maybe leave this and move on to a different case? I do apologize, I I can take your ladyship's port.
Okay.
Um, if I can, in the same bundle, my lady, um, tab ten is the case of L in Nottinghamshire. And that's paragraph.
That's what the judge referred to, so the judge referred to L, Collins and S A in Kent, those are the three we're going to go to now.
Um, unfortunately, S A and T in Harfeshir for some reason didn't make it into the bundle, but I think it's sufficient to take you to ninety-three and ninety-four, L and, um, Molesley for the same proposition, because they repeat the same. Um, so L is at tab ten, which is page one eight two. And this is a case where the background is that she had difficult family background, previous periods of section twenty. And then the facts are at three to five, um, they're quite straightforward facts, so at page one eight three, um, she had a breakdown in her relationship, um, with her mother and she was put in a bed and breakfast travel lodge.
Mm-hmm.
Um, on the fifteenth of September, and then moved on to the housing department, who then. And then moved on to the Housing Department, who then accommodated him, her, and then various other things happened and things broke down. And then she took legal advice, as you see at paragraph five, she took legal advice in two thousand and seven, so two years after she first was accommodated at the travel lodge. And they issued proceedings and it was brought before the court. And you see the issue at paragraph six is whether or not in September two thousand and five, her placement in the travel lodge was section twenty. And if so, obviously, then it continues in its extent. The significance of the time period that a child spends in care is set up by the judge at paragraph eight, just for your note, because I know, Lord Justice Baker, you had asked about the structure of leaving care. And so thirteen weeks is significant because.
Eligible.
Yes. And thirteen weeks before your eighteenth birthday makes you then a former relevant child.
Yeah, I mean, this case, our case doesn't fall into that category.
Well, on the judge's analysis.
On the judge's analysis, we can come on to that, right. But in this case, this child was eligible.
In this case, at the time, the judge, at the time of the decision under challenge, the child wasn't eligible, but on allowing this claim, the judge, the child became an eligible child.
Yes.
I hope that makes sense.
It does, but we mustn't get sidetracked into the Children Act provision at the moment. We just look at ongoing duty.
Of course, of course. So the question of delay is dealt with. So before, actually, if you go to twenty-one first, my lord. One of the starting points in terms of the approach of this surge at paragraph twenty-one is it's common ground that the classification or definition of what was being done by a council at the time F O T R O, where there is no assessment. So that's another case where there were no assessments and where the relevant matters weren't in mind, cannot possibly be determinative as to what occurred and under which section the acts took place. And the judge in that case at paragraph thirty-three, one nine one, then did an exercise of reviewing the case notes in order to ascertain what is it that the local authority did or didn't do. And then at forty-six deals with the fact of delay.
So which paragraph?
Forty-six, my lord, at page one nine five. So it's a brief paragraph on delay. I found that the claimer was a relevant child in two thousand and five and after eighteen. Since then, he has become a former relevant child, which has been capable of being resolved at any stage. That there was no call for waiting until the claimant instructed. That's the case of the defendant.
But this case, permission had already been granted on the papers by Mrs. Justice Dobbs, hadn't it, paragraph forty-seven?
Yes.
So the judge says, look, I can't really, she didn't adjourn it to me, so the question of delay has gone so far as it affects permission. So then he just looks at delay.
In terms of relief.
Delay's not going to stop me granting relief because I think the child was in need.
So he does look at delay and its impact on what ultimately should be the outcome in relation to relief. But this is his analysis, is that this is a child in need. So he's found it irrational for the local authorities to have found that he should have not in need. The duty has been an ongoing duty since two thousand and five. That's last sentence of one nine five. That duty has been an ongoing duty. It's paragraph forty-eight.
Forty-eight is where he mentions it first, isn't it? So this is all, this is all on the basis that the delay in terms of being able to bring the claim has is not open because that's been dealt with by Mrs. Justice Dobbs. So he's dealing here with, finally, I should deal briefly with the point raised in respect of delay. And he's satisfied that delay doesn't bar the relief I otherwise grant.
Yes. But.
And that's relief in terms of what she is now entitled to by virtue of his finding that she was a child in need at the beginning in two thousand and five. And then there are the consequential provisions that say if you're a child in need, whichever category you come into, then X, Y, Z.
And you see that, my lady, at paragraph forty-nine of his judgment.
Yeah.
He sets that out. But in order to even get to that point, because all the case law says, well, even if you decide delay against the defendant at the first stage, it's open to the trial judge to look at delay again, undo delay under the section thirty-two.
To consider it as, in, under the umbrella of relief.
Yes, and in the Litchfield case, which I didn't take you to for time, but it basically says, well, although there are two separate stages, the same factors go, very similar factors go to both stages.
Yes, because, that makes perfect sense, because for instance, relief may be claimed for a long way in the past. And the respondent counsel would say, well, that can't be right. We accept we're in breach, we accept we have to pay from now on, say. But we shouldn't have to pay back then because we didn't know that there was even a claim, or however it works out. So it makes complete sense to say they're relevant to both. I'm just, I mean, he says the delay does not and should not bar the relief I otherwise grant. And explains why.
Yes. But the reasons why he says that is because he makes the finding, because the finding that is the local authority irrational in finding that she wasn't a child in need was still in play, although had passed the permission threshold. And he decides they were acting irrationally, he was, she wasn't a child in need. The duty has been ongoing since the moment in time in two thousand and five when she was put in the travel lodge. And as of now, one of the reasons, the third reason that they give is that she was in a very severe state and really needed the benefit of that. So it was a balance in that respect of prejudice as well as the nature of the duty that's owed in this kind of context. So it's context-specific when you look at promptitude, delay, extension of time.
The trouble with this case is it's looking at it at a different point in time. So it's looking at delay as an incident of the discretion to grant relief or not against a backdrop where he has found an established breach. What we're talking about in this case and this point is something different, isn't it? It's delay at the point of issue and whether you should have got on with it more quickly.
Yes, but.
And all you can offer us, and I'm not being, I'm just trying to, please don't think I'm deciding one way or the other, but all it is is those two golden words from paragraph forty-eight in the third line. The judge describes this as an ongoing duty. I'm not sure that that was something that was really in dispute, was it, in this case, as to whether it was an ongoing duty or whether it was a duty that arose in two thousand and five with consequential benefits if you established the duty in two thousand and five.
Well, that is the nature of these types, I mean, because the Children Act, you won't take into the full penalty of provisions in the Children Act, but it is.
Not without trying on my part.
But it is an important context, my lady, because the Children Act doesn't start at section seventeen, section twenty.
No, they're like gateways, aren't they, to other provisions?
But they are, but they are important gateways to an important amount, number of rights. And those rights, if you were in law, entitled to those rights, and you are still in a position where you are unable to because you have been blocked in law because of a decision that's been made by the, by Surrey County Council, then those are rights that have accrued but have just never been enjoyed and never been provided to you. If you think about it in that context, because the children.
It's a bit more than that. I think what your argument is, is that you could actually never have a situation under the Children Act where delay was an effective bar to the grant of permission because you would always be met with the argument that a claim to a section twenty duty was an ongoing right that endured up to the age of, what, twenty-five or whatever?
It is twenty-five.
That you would just wouldn't, there'd be no need to look at delay.
Well, I think that in a case, for example, if someone is, and not to make this about hypotheticals, but you could well see a case where someone is close to twenty-five, comes back and says, actually, you know, seven years, eight years later, you know, I was, you know, accommodated, you failed.
No, in your argument, it's not discretionary. This is an ongoing, they have an ongoing right to leave it till their twenty, the day before their twenty-fifth birthday, if you proceed.
But it still falls within the discretion of the court as to whether or not it was not led, brought promptly and therefore permission still would.
I don't think it does, it's a, anyway.
Well, no, ongoing breaches.
On your submissions, it doesn't, because on your submissions, the ongoing duty is a complete answer, which is what the judge found. And we're testing that because I think it needs testing.
Well, no, our submission is that the ongoing duty and all the how the court dealt with why is an important aspect of why it's not delayed.
Well, we'll come to the second part of it, just dealing with the ongoing duty. Anyway, you've shown us Nottingham.
Yes.
And those words. I note that in Nottingham, the issue was incredibly narrow because at paragraph twenty-three, the defendant accepted that if what occurred in September two thousand and five, i.e. the admitted thirteen-week qualification fell within section twenty, then the relief claimed would follow. So that, that.
But, but.
That's very clear and straightforward.
Although, although at paragraph forty-six, the defendant did resist relief on the basis that there was delay.
Well, he said strictly speaking. I mean, it all has the feel of something all rather uberter, I have to say. But anyway, you've shown us that passage. Now we go to Collins, is it?
Yes, Collins is at tab fourteen, which is in volume one as well. And that is page two, six, eight.
Two, six?
Eight.
Eight, thank you.
You can read the headnote in terms of just broadly speaking what the context of it is. But the facts start, there's a lengthy factual background. The long and short of it is that in a breakdown in her relationship with her father, she went to stay with Miss L. And you can see that referred to. So she went to stay with Miss L in twenty, two thousand and three, and that's paragraph twenty-two. And then Miss L realised, at paragraph twenty-six, Miss L then realised that the caring of the claimant could, she could ask for potentially fostering allowance or other financial support from Social Services. So Social Services did provide her with some financial support and then she realised in late two thousand and five that she could potentially, on the basis of what they were doing.
Get a foster allowance.
Get a fostering allowance, which is much more than section seventeen. And then correspondence ensued in paragraph twenty-six, you will see. She sought legal advice in two thousand and six, so that's paragraph twenty-six halfway down. And then a letter was sent by her solicitors and correspondence ensued between about April twenty twenty, two thousand and six and August two thousand and seven. And then proceedings were issued in two thousand and seven. So it's four years after the date on which she first was known by the local authorities.
But when she was still a child?
She was just about a child, yes.
She was still, she was under eighteen. She was born in eighty-nine.
Yes. Well.
These data's aren't going to be relevant though to your ongoing duty point, are they?
No, it's, no, because it's still a delay, it's still four, it's still four years. And it's still a challenge on the basis that.
The child's status was continuous throughout, is that right?
The child's status.
As a, as a child, looked after child?
Yes.
So the duty is longer, that's, you're going to take us to a passage, are you?
Yes, that's the next passage in paragraph twenty-seven. So at the permission stage, the question of delay was left open for argument in the full hearing. And on the facts of that case, there were delays that weren't entirely explained, delays in correspondence. But the judge decided, I've decided that the delay shouldn't act as a bar to the claim for two reasons. First, if they're acting unlawfully and failing to treat the claimant as a looked-after child, that state of affairs is continuing. And secondly, they were in communication to try and persuade the local authority to reconsider their decision. And thirdly, no prejudice to the defendant or third parties. So that's the analysis that was given by the judge on that case. And then he went on to decide the case on contemporaneous records, much like in this case.
When the judge says the state of affairs is continuing, I mean, that's, I entirely understand where you are.
Yes.
There's quite a lot packed into that sentence.
I appreciate that in a very short paragraph, that's quite a large information.
No, it's not very, I just, when people say, when judges say things like that, what I wonder about is whether the judge had in mind, I think it was Mr. Justice Supperston, as he became, that if he knocked it out for delay, and you see this quite a lot in the admin court, there's no point knocking something out for delay if the claimant could just turn up the next day and reissue because the state of affairs is continuing. So that's, that, that just, if that is what he was thinking, that would not model across to this case.
No, but my respect for submission is that that is not what he was thinking because there had already been this to and fro between Miss L and the local authority prior to two thousand and seven. So can I have some money? Why aren't you giving me some money? She went on a complaint.
What state of affairs were continuing then?
So the child was still being looked after by her.
Yes.
But she was struggling financially to meet his need.
Was there a continuing state of affairs in the present case? In that sense?
Well, in that sense, if you look at it from a perspective of if the person had been, if we're right that the accommodation started on our cross appeal, if we're right that duty and duty arose on the eighteenth of September, as the judge found. And on our cross appeal, every, all steps taken in order to provide him with accommodation, including allowing him to stay at Kay's, was part of the discharge of that duty. So let's just assume that for the moment. If even if he left Kay's on some time before his eighteenth birthday, he would have, on that basis, accrued relevant child duties.
There wouldn't be, there would not be an ongoing state of affairs at the time the claim was issued.
Well, there would be an ongoing state of affairs because he would still have ongoing rights as a care leader. That's the point.
He would have accrued rights.
Because you cannot get leaving care support unless you have been looked after for a requisite period of time. And so that's why the whole web of the Children Act is important to understand.
Just taking this phrase, ongoing state of affairs, which you've alighted here in Michael Supperston's judgment, you're saying that once rights had accrued, to use my lord's phrase, that was an ongoing state of affairs until age twenty-five or whatever it was?
Until you're twenty-one or twenty-five, now the duties extend to twenty-five.
Yeah.
At that relevant time, the duties extended to twenty-one, as your lordship would know. And there were subsequent amendments. But because you can't accrue any of the future rights, those future rights don't accrue unless your initial rights accrue, but they're all part of the same thing. They're not separate rights, they're a separate decision to be a former relevant child.
When we're looking at delay and extension of time, is that the way to look at it? Or shouldn't you look at the, shouldn't you look at if there's a, if there's a period during which the child was being looked after but then wasn't being looked after, which is what you've postulated? The child was looked after with Miss Kay's mother for a period of time and then stopped it. Then at that point, it could be said there's no longer an ongoing state of affairs. The rights accruing, the rights accruing continue. Why, why, why is there an ongoing state of affairs?
Because he, because had, had he, though, in another case, if he, say he had accrued relevant child status, but for whatever reason. Say he had accrued relevant child status, but for whatever reason, it broke down, they left. The local authority would still have to do a pathway plan. Prior to his eighteenth birthday, to do a review, he would still have, at that point, ongoing. As soon as you accrue thirteen weeks, a personal advisor that helps you through to your transition to adulthood. So that, that is why the sort of connection of all of these rights is important, because. One leads to another, leads to another, leads to another. If you cut them off here, that disturbs the entire chain of events, so it's not, you don't get separate decisions. That they become a form of relevant childhood, that's not a decision of the local authority, it's a matter of law. As a consequence of the statute. Eligible children is a consequence of the statutory conditions. It's not another decision made by the local authority.
And if that submission is right, I've understood it correctly, then it doesn't matter. That there was a period here of two and a half years where there was no contact.
Well, we don't accept that there was a period of two and a half.
Assume for the purposes of the question, it would, that wouldn't matter.
No, because the leaving care duties include, under section twenty three C two. A duty to keep in contact with the local, with the child. So there's a positive proactive, that, that's the nature of the Children Act duties under part three. Is that they are proactive and not reactive.
Forward looking.
Forward looking, so once you are accommodated, you get a care plan, you get regular reviews of the care plan. When you become an eligible child, you get a pathway plan before you're eighteen, you get appointed a personal advisor. You then get that planning to transition to adulthood, you get regular reviews in adulthood. That personal advisor is that important link for the child with the local authority on an ongoing basis.
So this applies in a, for a different factual context, a child who becomes a looked after child for a limited period of time and then goes home.
Yes.
Let's say a child age, as often happens, a young child. All sorts of care cases, for example.
Yes.
I've dealt with, a young child goes home, having been in care for up to the age of three. They, they would still have. The rights that you're talking about.
No, so this, this is, this is why it was important to take you to the legislation, because. The definition of an eligible child is someone who has been looked after, looked after. Between fourteen and eighteen with at least one day.
And what about qualifying child?
A qualifying child is someone who had been looked after, but not for thirteen weeks.
Even in the, also.
Also fourteen.
Okay, fine, so it doesn't apply to younger children?
No, it doesn't, so that's why these care leave cases are all to do with children who are older.
But even so, if a child who was in care for briefly for a period of a week or, or a short period.
Yeah.
At fourteen, these rights would, these, the, the rights that you're talking about would accrue.
No, you have to be accommodated for at least one day over the age of sixteen. There's, there's a quirk in the legislation.
Okay, thank you.
We can, we can produce.
Ignore my note, it's my mistake, move on, sorry.
It, it might be useful in any event for your lordships and ladyship to have a note on just how the cascading of these duties are, because. That obviously.
Possibly, but let, let's focus on what we're, we're still, we're still looking. Is there any other submissions you want to make about the ongoing duty?
So we say, this is like those cases, the short, the short point, you've looked at C N Oesley, you've looked at Ellen Knotts. And we say that the judge didn't err in adopting, he, he didn't went on a frolic of his own, he adopted. The approach that has been taken in the cases that he reviewed. And the S A case at ninety five and the ninety six, the T and Hertfordshire case are all along the same vein.
Have we got those?
No, my lord.
Or we can't rely on cases that we haven't got. And when you say the same vein, the high watermark of this is the paragraph, paragraph twenty seven in the judgment of. Mr Justice Supperstone as he was to become.
Yes, but, but he, he does, the, the judge does summarize at ninety five, ninety six, and my lone friend does not actually criticize. His summary of those cases.
No, Miss Lu, we're in the Court of Appeal. Just because points aren't criticized doesn't mean to say they're necessarily right. So, so if, if, if we haven't got those cases. We've, we've gone down to Collins. But S A and R T, you say, we haven't got.
Yes, but you can see then at paragraph ninety seven, the judge says, I consider that this court should take the same approach, so. He has not gone on his own frolic, he has taken an approach on a review of the.
And the question for us is whether he was right.
Of course, of course.
And are all these first, are all these first instance cases?
Yes, they are, they are first instance cases.
Okay. You've, you've, you've tried to draw on the Street Court case, the House of Lords case, but. I think you can see to the lady, that there isn't really anything in that.
No, but those cases, that, that case and the C N Oesley and Ellen Nottingham Show case. Are all about, well, what the child did or didn't know, or what is, is.
Yes.
Isn't the basis upon which you say.
But your submission is actually quite a, quite a bold, I know that's a pejorative done phrase, quite a, how do I?
It's, it's a big, it's a very good point that you made.
You're saying that the whole architecture of this, this whole structure of the act as it's evolved. Is to create an ongoing duty, it's not just the, not just focusing on the actual duty to accommodate under section twenty. But all the rights flow from that, through the child's coming into the category of relevant. Or, or qualifying, as the case may be, is that, is that right?
Well, the.
And that's what we should understand, and that's the ongoing duty, which is relevant considering issues of delay.
Yes, because that is the context, that, that's a whole, the whole scheme doesn't exist. As freestanding provisions, the evaluative judgment of the local authority, which you have heard a lot about. Happens at the stage of section seventeen and section twenty. And then the rights automatically flow from that as part of the legislative scheme. It, it, it's not.
Yes, without any consideration of promptly.
Well, the, the scheme is there to safeguard.
I understand that, but that's the effect of it, when my lord says it, it's a bold submission, it's a wide, I prefer to say it's a wide ranging submission. Because it does mean that, that the J R test of promptly would not apply in these cases.
Well, for promptitudes, even if there is a breach. Promptitude is, as my lone friend said, even if you're not within the three month limit, time limit. You still require to take a claim promptly, so you can still.
That's the whole point, if it's a continuing breach, we don't need to worry about promptly because you've got a continuing breach. And it also means that Mr Justice Supperstone, as he became, is on a frolic, because in his paragraph, he talks about merits points like prejudice. And whether there've been continued discussion between the parties, which really wouldn't matter on your case, because it wouldn't make any difference.
Time doesn't begin to run against you until the duties come to an end.
I mean, what Mr Justice Supperstone says is, is equally compatible, I would suggest. With effectively him saying, I'm going to extend time. Because I can see that there are continuing obligations and I can see that the merits of the case require it. I, I, speaking for myself at the moment, and I know it's towards the end of, of day one and we will come back for more. It strikes me as a rather equivocal statement. It's quite, you know, it's compatible with both parties' cases.
You were correcting me when I said, I think time doesn't begin to run, you said that's not right, it does, you were going to say it does begin to run. Once you become aware or reasonably could have become aware of your rights.
Yes. Once you become aware.
It, it, it.
So there may be an ongoing breach, but once you become aware.
Right.
Then there is still an expectation on the person to act, to say, I want to assert my rights, because why would you, I mean. One might say, why would you sit around and wait for the breach to continue to run on, that you, you would want to act? And so the promptitude aspect of it is still highly relevant.
Yes, and so that, that then brings us.
That makes it less of a bold submission.
But when I said bold, I, 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 I didn't mean it was wrong necessarily, I, it's a strike, let's say strike, it's a striking submission.
But, but, you know, I, I don't, I don't suggest that because of that, it, it wipes out all other considerations that need to be taken. That, that, that's quite an important point that I'd want to get across, that is not our case, that you can then ignore everything.
But that's not the judge's approach, because the judge at ninety nine. Says, in any event, even if contrary to the foregoing, i.e. if there wasn't a continuing duty. Then if there's been delay, I think there's good reason to grant an extension of time. So the judge regards the ongoing duty as a complete answer. And it's only if he's wrong about that, that he deals with the question of the extension.
Well, i- i- if, if your lordships and your ladyship take that view in relation to the error in the judge's analysis of that. Because I do appreciate that, that it may not be, it's an imperfect way of expressing itself, because he does then consider. The other factors which, as your ladyship says, could go both ways, I mean, those are relevant factors for promptitude and they're relevant factors for an extension of time.
Well, we'll have your submissions, I'm conscious of the time and I don't want to delay, we'll have your submissions on that element tomorrow.
Yes.
But overnight, if you could consider this, that. If, if you're right in your exchanges with my lord, where you. Hope to temper the bold submission that you were otherwise making. By saying, well, if you become aware of it, then that's different, and then there's the question of acting promptly and so on. On the face of it, the judge doesn't deal with that, because the judge doesn't identify when it was. That the claimant had sufficient knowledge. So, so don't worry about it now, but when you, when we address this second part tomorrow. Which is effectively, if you're wrong on the ongoing duty point, so it's a question of. The extension, I think the, the, the start point is. Where we start a consideration of an extension. Okay? All right, thank you both very much, thank you. And we'll come back at Hofstra ten tomorrow morning, I think that. Because you've already touched on, as a result of my lord's questions mainly, but because you've touched on the substance. Quite a bit, I think we've actually made rather good progress.
Possibly, although I think. My approach for tomorrow, just so I can have a headline, is to take you back to the judge for the substantive appeal.
Yeah.
To address you on the back of the judgment, because the question for the appeal court is whether or not the judge was wrong. And so it would be worth therefore going back to the judgment and doing, dealing with it that way.
Fine, well, you, I, I mean, at the present rate of striking, you've certainly got all morning.
I'm grateful for that indication.
For the. Response, and, and that, I, I think includes Mr Clark too, because we need to be in the position of. If, if you're asserting a right to reply on your grounds. Then the afternoon has to be for replies. So that the, the long stop time for your case is going to be lunchtime tomorrow. Okay, thank you very much.